This conference.
All right, it's 6:00 PM and we will call to order the Select Board meeting for May 18th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And let's jump right into the agenda. So the first item that we have is the Select Board Rules of Order. Which as I presented last week, this is very similar to. Or it was based on the rules of order listed in the Selectment Handbook with quite a few revisions. And I had made a draft. Did Susan, do you have any changes?
Yeah, so just the one that's in between eight and nine.
I think I see that. Yeah, the board reserves the right to close the floor to public comment to allow for board deliberation for discussions with employees and for other reasons should the need arise. All right, let's see. I think I like that language, maybe let's move it to. Once board members have had a chance to speak on the agenda item or motion, the chair at his own discretion should recognize members of the public who would like to speak first time. And let's just add that.
Yep. Do it, that makes sense because it's all on the same topic.
Would it be possible, Melissa, to just add that?
Move my comment, the hashtag one into number seven, into number seven?
Yeah.
At the end of it?
Yeah.
At the end of it.
Because that's about public comments.
And I just, you know, it's obvious why, I just think that there are times when we should be able to have a conversation as a board without the public thinking that they're going to chime in.
Yeah.
That process works super well on the ZDA. And on the ZDA, we have the open period, then we close it for deliberation. But we reserve the right to ask questions and the person can't answer, but then it's back to deliberation. It just allows for like a moment of deliberation and then you can open the backup to the next topic. That was my, that was my vision, so glad to like it. Okay, I'm good with that.
And then.
You want a fresh copy?
Yeah, should we have a fresh copy? Should we sign it?
Sure.
Do you want to add a couple signature lines at the bottom, please? And I'll motion to approve the Rules of, the Select Board Rules of Order with that change.
Second?
Is there any public comment on limiting public comment in the Rules of Order?
Are you going to come to a deliberation and decision before everybody has shared?
No.
So the way that, the way that it's written is, once board members have had a chance to speak on an agenda item or motion, the chair at his own discretion should recognize members of the public who would like to speak. First time speakers should be recognized before those who have already spoken. The board reserves the right to close the floor to public comment to allow for board deliberation for discussions with employees and for other reasons should the need arise. And the point before is actually, the chair must be fair in recognizing speakers. The chair has a duty to make sure contrary and possibly minority opinions are given the opportunity to speak.
Okay. Is that fair? Do you want my copy? Because I have.
Sure.
So we have the, a second motion to approve these Rules of Order. And if that's the end of comments, we'll call vote.
Aye.
Susan, vote yes, and I will vote yes. And that's that, and we'll sign a copy of it.
Nicely done. By the way, I think you did a great job working that up and I am with the public.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Why go on the record for?
And Melissa, could we please post that to the Select Board, like, page?
Sure. Ah, yep.
Okay.
Does it need to be the signed copy or just the, like, code of conduct? I think I'm happy to sign it, but I just.
Which one?
What do you want her to post, our version of it, signed or just the?
I like signatures because you can always go back in the minutes and find when things were agreed upon. But it's just that much easier to know that it was approved by the Select Board.
I just meant which one did you want her to put up there, the blank one, like the concept or the actual?
Might as well just the signature.
Okay, cool beans.
Okay.
Did you catch that, Melissa, to post on the separate page? Cool, okay, thanks.
Okay, item number two is draft Select Board Code of Conduct. So Susan, you had brought forward before the board a draft job description.
And I think you did a really good job of integrating it. I had only one, one thing under responsibilities.
Yeah.
So, um, so we specifically are mentioning the responsibility of the warrants and attendance at town meetings. But I feel like this is one of those tricky things, like it doesn't need to list everything. But, and you covered a lot of it, like stay for meetings, come to meetings. I do sort of feel like we also have a response, like the other two responsibilities I feel are waiting. Or that ultimately we're fiscally responsible for the town. And we're responsible for the employees. And I feel like I can't list everything, like that mass Selectment Handbook is huge.
Yeah.
But those are two that I, like, of serious responsibilities that I feel like I'd like to see mentioned somehow. But I wanted, I didn't want to word it because I wanted to, like, it's hard to include but not, and omit, but be inclusive, you know what I'm saying? So I wanted to see what your thought was about that.
Well, I think the difficulty is that there's a lot of responsibilities of a Select Board member. And we can't make an inclusive list.
Right.
I had specifically added some of the wording that you had had, that you had proposed. And this is one instance.
I noticed.
I am not opposed to making a longer list and I'm not opposed to not having a list. Because it may, might seem inclusive when it's not.
Right.
But.
It's a tricky line to walk down, I get that.
We could add, for the Select Board, these responsibilities include that we, and I think there's something mentioned about employees also.
Is there? I didn't catch it. Positive workplace environment?
Well, there's, I guess there's general, there's general statements about how board members should treat employee staff, members of the public, other board members.
I, I think I was meaning more like, actually, we're, we're hiring them.
Yeah.
When they're put forward. And I, I think that it's important for us to recognize that as a responsibility, that it's not just about how we treat them, if we should be involved in the, somehow, we should have some involvement in the process of hiring and take responsibility for that. Because in the end, we're signing all the dotted line.
Yeah.
So it was specifically the lack of involvement of some previous board members with hiring. And also with taking any responsibility for the fiscal thing, which you kind of covered in the warrants. I guess I was trying to broaden it to recognizing the fiscal responsibility.
Yeah, so why don't, would it make sense for you to, uh, return?
You wanted to try to draft something?
Yeah, I don't want to rush, you know, I don't want to rush this, so why don't?
No, no, let's do it.
If you want to come back next week?
All right, I, let me draft something.
And I think if, if that's going to be generally, yeah, and it also gives me another week to sit on this because I, I only finished this recently.
I, I actually, like, I would, I like it as a, on a whole, like, that was my only comment, which that means I pretty much really liked it. So, um, yeah, okay. So.
Nancy?
Will you be reading that to the public of?
It's a, it's a public document, basically it's a code of conduct. For public officials of the town of Monterey. I can read the headers off real quick because that could give you.
That's okay.
Nancy, would you like me to send you a copy right now?
Sure.
Sure, all right, I need to take a note to do it.
It's.
If I forget, just email me, like, forget, by the time I get home.
I think it's basically reminding board members of things that are common sense. But sometimes we need to be reminded of things like complying with the law and acting ethically. And acting in the public interest.
Yeah.
Abided by ethics law, confidential information, representing private interests. And it was one of the recommendations of the Green Report was that the Select Board adopt a code of conduct. So I think fulfilling that recommendation, and I think it's a good thing in general. There's no enforcement mechanism, it speaks to enforcement. Other than that, you know, now there's, if, if and when we adopt this, this is out to the public and we have it.
So it speaks to enforcement, what would enforcement look like if it speaks to?
It's not responsible.
So it doesn't, I can read that paragraph. The Monterey Code of Conduct expresses standards of ethical conduct expected for all public officials. Officials themselves have the primary responsibility to assure that ethical standards are understood and met. And that the public can continue to have full confidence in the integrity of government. The chairs of boards, committees, and commissions have the additional responsibility to intervene when actions that appear to be in violation of the code of conduct are brought to their attention. A violation of this code of conduct shall not be considered a basis for challenging the validity of a board, committee, or commission decision. So in the way that the open meeting law, you know, could be enforced by the state, this doesn't have that kind of enforcement mechanism. But it would, it's kind of like an honor code. Something to try to guide people in good conduct. So we'll deal with that next week.
Okay.
With any recommendations that you have.
How's our time?
We have seventeen minutes until the first interview.
All right. Do we want to track over the ten point or what's next?
Yes, so the next agenda item is draft ten point plan based on recommendations made by the Green Report.
Which for reasons unknown, didn't go through when I put, I can't get, I can't send you a copy right now because it won't let me access the email, but that's it.
Okay, so we, we have.
This one I have a bunch of.
Yeah, so if you have a bunch of edits, and I know that Melissa sent some edits. And if we don't have them at the moment, maybe we could take this up at next, at the next meeting?
Okay.
And would it be possible for you to incorporate Melissa's edits in with your edits into one document as you see fit? Does that make sense?
I think Melissa had more comments than edits.
Yeah, if you send me yours, I'll incorporate them all.
Okay, sure.
And then we can.
And I think there were a couple of things I wanted to actually talk to you about rather than just edits.
Yeah, why don't we, if you have some broad things to talk about, right now we can.
So, like, an example would be in number six, the record keeping issues. So it reads, record keeping duties should be transferred from the town administrator position if the town administrator is advising the SB, she should not also be able to control members' access to documents. And my comment was, so if the issue, first of all, there's two things. One is, if we were going to have a different person be in control of documents, who would that be? Because the documents include confidential documents and a lot of other documents, all of which the TA typically does have access to. As far as, like, I have with it now, like, fifteen town administrator and town manager job descriptions, and they all include access to documents, including confidential access. I don't know who else in town would be an appropriate person to have oversight of the documents? Like, from a functional standpoint?
Yeah.
That's one. My other thing, and which is kind of a separate issue, is, um. I guess that's more on the, where to say here? No, that was pretty much it. Like, I don't, I think that functionally this would be a problem in a small town. So I don't know how that can be done. I also want to say that, that I think ultimately the Select Board is supposed to have access to all the documents also. And if I, like, that's, we're ultimately the final say. So if there's an issue with document access, I think we have to address it directly and say, we should have access to these documents. We need to have access to documents to get the documents. Like, we have direct recourse, right? So I'm not sure giving it to another person, you can have another person that was a problem. But in the end, the box is out for the left. And if we say the Select Board has access to these documents, we need that document. And we should be able to get it out. Already.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's fair enough. Gary, did you have a comment?
Yeah, if it's a public document, it's a public document, so everyone's entitled to say it. If it's not a public document, then it shouldn't be released to the public.
Yeah, so I think to, to answer your point, Gary, there are some documents that might be, the Select Board might be privy to, that might have confidential information that needs to be deactive for general public release. Although that's not most documents. But maybe employee personnel information. But in general, you're right, most of the documents that pass through our hands are public. Unless they fall under a certain exemption.
Why not have the REO, you know, take care of those kinds of things? They get the files anyway when they have to, you know, get public information. You can have that person take care of it.
Right now, the person, the REO is the TA, so it's kind of.
Right, so you, well, one of the recommendations in the report was to separate that duty.
But we'd have to have a person on hand to do that and we'd have to have the money to pay them adequately to do that job, which would probably be, based on the number of documents I've received in the last week I've been on this job, we're talking about a large number of documents, not like the occasional document, right? So we have to then not only have the money to pay an REO for public requests, but have the money to pay the REO to deal with all of the back and forth documents, which is a lot of documents. I'm not opposed to your content, I'm just giving the reality as I see it, based on the number of documents that I get a day, it's a, it's not insubstantial.
Then you can just continue and have the town administrator who's paid to do it anyway.
And, and so, so I think.
Which is not one of the recommendations.
It may not be, but.
If you're trying to do that.
Yeah, sure, and if, you know what, if you're in Boston, you probably have fifteen people in your office and you can assign a single person to do it, but I don't, I don't see how we can afford to have that number of staff. And I think if the issue is accountability, we have the ability to hold our employees accountable. And what we have to do is actually do that.
Right, but you're not following the recommendations of the report and you're putting your eggs in one basket.
Sorry to cut you off.
Are you willing to?
Sorry to cut you off.
So go ahead.
So I think, kind of what we're getting at is that this ten point plan that I drafted was, I think, more, mostly actually just quoted from the report. And it was, it started out as my summary of the recommendations of the report. Which is not to say that the Select Board needs to adopt the recommendations verbatim. I would hope that we would consider all of them and have good reasons to not adopt the ones that we don't adopt. But I would also hope that if we adopt a plan, that we're serious about moving forward in the directions that it says we're going to move forward in. So hopefully, you have a week to continue edits. I will think about number six in particular and logistically how we would function with that. And then at the end of the day, hopefully we can come to some consensus about actionable policy goals that we can achieve, that we want to achieve. Because if we adopt this and knowing that we're not going to achieve them, that, that's no, that's no help to anybody.
I, I agree.
So I will take the week to think about that because I think you raised a, a good point about logistically how that would work.
To that and on eight also, so I talked to a couple of other town managers. And I was actually told that in a number of towns, including Vinsdale until recently, the Select Board actually just controlled their own agenda.
Uh huh.
I mean, it's always going to be important for the TA or TM to be able to tell you items they need to put on there, that.
Yeah.
But we have control over our own agenda, we just have to exercise control over our agenda.
Yeah.
It's our agenda.
And I think agendas is one thing, minutes are a little bit different because they are very time consuming.
Yes, I completely agree.
I've drafted, I think, like, two or three sets of minutes in my year on the board. And I was averaging something like three hours per hour of meeting to draft minutes, so.
On the board, if you're on a job.
I think minutes, and so maybe that's something to consider on eight. And this is for, really a future meeting, but we have to discuss the money that we have raised for our Select Board Secretary, which I think really addresses number eight.
Yep, okay.
So if you come back with your comments or revisions on six, and I will think about six myself. And eight, I'll think about eight specifically, because I actually drafted this before town meeting approved those funds, I think I drafted it before it was even put in the budget. So, and then if this takes a couple of weeks, that's fine. Because I would rather have a plan that we agree to, to act on than.
And by the way, I'm not opposed to anything in principle, it was more like.
Logistically.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I think that's number three. And are you here for an interview?
I am, I'm Donna Brewer.
Thank you.
I'm Donna Brewer, I didn't realize we were going to be in person, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
So should we?
I love it out here.
Shall we jump ahead to, to the interview, does that work for you?
It works for me, but if you want to keep going in order and whatever you like.
No, I think, we have you, we have you down in eight minutes, but I think that was a good starting point. Should we pull up the chair?
Yes, please.
Oh, yeah.
I popped that just for not jumping out while I'm ordering myself.
Which is not intended either. I hope I'm not intended either, but, does that work?
That's fine, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for joining us, sure. All right.
Thank you, it's just a lovely drive down here. It's not bad, you know?
And are you in Stockbridge?
I'm town council in Stockbridge.
Okay.
So I was actually just there on Monday.
Yeah. Okay, well, would you like to start with a presentation, a little presentation? I mean, we got your proposal, which we reviewed.
Sure, let me tell you a little bit about myself and the firm. So I'm Donna Brewer, partner in Meara's in Carrington. The firm was started in nineteen eighty-eight, specifically focused on municipal representation. So that has been its focus for quite some time. I've actually been doing municipal law since nineteen ninety-eight. So when I started this town council for the town of Hamilton up on the North Shore. We currently, we just added a new council on Monday, so we're now up to thirteen lawyers, all of whom do municipal law. And we are town council for eleven towns, as well as special counsel in, for lots of other organizations. Personally, as I said, I'm town council for Stockbridge. I also give legal advice to the Tri-Town Board of Health, Lennox Lee in Stockbridge. And we are council to the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. So we have a number of ties out here in your area. So as a town council, you have to do everything. So I am the contact, I am the person that you would talk to. And I am the person who's probably going to answer your questions because I've just been doing it for so long. I started actually as a litigator, so to the extent that you ever have lawsuits, which nobody wants, or you need to do enforcement actions, again, that is something that I do, that's not something that would need to go out to a different firm. There, I, so I don't think there's anything you would need to go out to a different firm for, except I will say for bond counsel work. Everybody in the, in the state pretty much has the same law firm. If you ever have that issue, you're going to have separate counsel. Regional schools, they always have their own council, although I've represented and we still represent communities that are in regional school districts. So I have done, for example, the issue when not enough members approve the regional budget and it has to go to a district-wide budget meeting, and that can be a bit tricky because that doesn't happen all that often, so there aren't that many people who have done it. I've done a ton of election issues, that's kind of one of my areas of concentration in the firm. In fact, there was a very close election just Monday night in Stockbridge, so we'll see if anything develops there.
How close was it?
Nine votes between the incumbent select person and her challenger, so.
Melissa, how many total votes?
Oh, gosh, I don't remember offhand.
I just don't even, I have no idea how big their electorate is. I know it's about seventeen hundred total in the town, but that's not one vote.
No, I read that it was twenty-some-odd percentage of voters turned out in the election. So election, open meeting law is a perennial favorite in municipalities, so that we deal with pretty much every day. Public Records Act requests those, we have relationships with, with people in the division of open government as well as in the supervisor of public records, so we deal with them a lot. I personally handle any kind of appellate tax board issues that come up. So I do all of those hearings before the appellate tax board, as well as just advising assessors on assessments of both real and personal property, both residential and commercial and special purpose properties. What else? Procurement, we do all things procurement, which is a huge issue. Actually, my partner Jenny Merrill, that's all she does, is procurement for all of our clients. So if you've got solar panel issues, if you've got any kind of state, if state bidding issues, she is the one who will do that. On the other hand, if you've got any issues with small wireless facilities and small cell, I'm the one who does that. I was the one who drafted the first in the state and among the first in the nation bylaws and rules and regs that was first adopted in the town of Burlington and now it's, it's all over the place. And how to deal with the aesthetic standards and the fees and the other controls that under federal law are pretty much constrained as to what municipal needs to do. And we continue to have citizens who are very concerned about the radio frequency emissions and federal law has told us hands off. So that remains something that we continue to work on. That's about the range, I'm happy to answer any questions, but if you had the issue, I've probably dealt with it.
Thank you so much for the presentation. So I think because we're a similar size to Stockbridge, you know, roughly, and might have some of the similar issues, you kind of ran the gamut of all the issues that come up. And we've just recently, you know, we were engaged with a firm that has many attorneys. How, how often in Stockbridge do you find yourself answering questions? And how often are you referring those questions to somebody else? Within my firm?
Just curiously, I had a call with Stockbridge's town administrator on the drive out here. So I tend to talk with Mike Canellis four times a week, maybe? Just on very quick questions that come up. He calls me, I can usually answer him right there in the phone call and we move on. So I very rarely have to come out to Stockbridge for meetings. One thing COVID has taught us is how much we can get accomplished virtually. So if you need me to be in meeting, I'll always come out here if you want me to. But if you want to do it over Zoom, that's fine too. But I think we're all pretty used to that right now. But I deal with, with Stockbridge a fair amount, and questions just come up. But as I say, they're, they're usually questions that can be easily and quickly answered.
And you typically handle? And you typically handle the town meeting, or?
Always, yeah. The only reason I wouldn't would be if I actually had an illness or something that kept me from being there.
The one, one of the issues that came up in our previous council was that um because there were two councils that were often handling our questions, we would, they would, I wasn't on the board. I'm newly elected as of last Tuesday. My last first meeting was last Wednesday, but I was attending board meeting for last year. Um, it it seemed as though it was not an infrequent occurrence to get different answers to the same question from the two different attorneys, which was a cause of some confusion and difficulty.
Yeah.
Um, is that, how would you deal with such a?
So you get me.
Right, okay.
I am the one that you will be dealing with. I was the one that will be giving you opinions. Although the old joke is, you get two lawyers together, you're gonna get three opinions. So I understand that that is um something that can happen, but for that reason, you get me. Uh, I will, as I say, I'll call in somebody like Jenny in my firm if it's a procurement issue. Uh, but I do labor, I do employment, I do taxes, I do town meeting, I do open meeting law. Um, so chances are unlikely you're you're going to be dealing directly with anybody else.
Uh, one question I have about billing.
Hmm.
I noticed that you uh that your firm did offer a retainer uh amount, and seem to think that it's not in our, in the town's best interest to have a retainer, and I can understand some of the reasons why.
Yeah.
Um, it's not in the town's best interest. But I think on the other hand, um, we have had higher than usual and higher than expected legal expenses in the past, in the past year.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the concerns, you know, that that I have is is I I like, I like the idea that we're only paying when we're, when we're, when we're getting advice from council, and when council's working for for Monterey, that they really are dedicated to Monterey, based on the hourly rate. Um, but it is uh a concern of mine that as, you know, everyday issues pile up, and we only have appropriated so much money at town meeting.
Right.
Um, how, how has Stockbridge, I guess, or other towns dealt with that kind of issue of of appropriating money at town meeting and then not having a retainer? At the end of the year, are they kind of using councils sparingly, or do they make, you know, get, get money from another account, or how?
Yeah, so that's a perennial question as well, just for our firm as well as for towns, our our clients. So we've, we will send you a bill every month, so you will see exactly, we break down in tenths of an hour, how much time I am spending on Monterey work, and you will see what the topics are, which will be described in the bill. So at the end of the first month, you're going to be getting an understanding of how often you are working, you are using my services, how often I am working for you. Uh, you know, there are always things that nobody can predict. Uh, you know, a lawsuit comes in that isn't covered by insurance, or um, you know, unexpected issues of employment. Um, so that's one of the reasons why retainers do not work for you, because then the lawyers don't tend to work those issues as they should, because it's not, it's not cost effective for them to do so. Uh, so the monthly bill is gonna help you and me. As we get near the end of the fiscal years, typically, our work does slow down, because our clients recognize they're coming to the end of their appropriated sum for that service. Uh, when unusual things come up, we have had clients who have had to do reserve on transfers. But nobody likes to do that. So you tend to um be more careful with your, with your requests at the end of the fiscal year, and then July comes around and you get board calls. But is, is it, that's just the name of the game.
Yeah.
So it sounds like a good deal of the work you're doing for Stockbridge is on the phone. I just wanted to know if it, would you feel comfortable putting um responses into writing, just so we can make sure there's no miscommunications?
It's phone and email.
Okay.
And.
And I would count emails writing, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, no. Um, you know, when I first started, which was in the dark ages, everything was done by formal memorandum. And that, I can't remember the last time I wrote formal memorandum. It's the questions come in by email. I do the research and I provide the case citations, the statutory citations, my opinion or my recommendations in writing in an email. And uh, you know, a phone call, I'm gonna return in the same day. Emails, I try to respond to those uh within twenty-four hours. I was responding today to an email that I got in in Friday, and I apologize for having taken so long. So that's not my style to take a long time, and I will uh let you know, even if I don't respond the same day, I'll let you know I'm working on it.
Um, you kind of alluded to this, so I was gonna ask, um, how would you characterize your approach to working with towns in terms of the level of guidance you're you're providing? Sort of on the scale of um, you should do this, to like, I'm being very extreme here, like I'm making ridiculous extremes. I would expect you to be somewhere in the middle, but you should do this versus um, here are the six possibilities, but I won't even rank them or tell you what I think the likely outcomes are.
Uh, yeah, it's gonna depend on the question, on what you want from me. So if all you want me to do is outlining six potential options, I, that's what I will do. However, lawyers can only recommend. I can't tell you what to do. And oddly enough, I know it's hard to believe, but sometimes your clients don't take your advice. That's okay, you know? They they may decide there are reasons why, political reasons why, or cultural reasons why they're not going to take my advice. Uh, so long as it's not illegal, that's gonna be fine. But I will give you my opinion, my recommendation, and I won't take it personally. If you decide to do something else, I may just help you deal with the fallout.
We're global, I don't fall out.
Yeah.
Would you be willing to um give us a list of contacts at all the towns you serve, so that we could sort of pick some people to talk to about how comfortable they've been with your services?
Yeah, absolutely. I can do that. You can start with Jim Woollett's at Tri-Town Board Health. You can start with Mike Canellus uh at Stockbridge, uh and you can um I can never pronounce my name, Tom at at Berkshire.
B R P C.
Yeah, B R P C. No, but yes, I would get that list to you with their phone numbers.
I take it that you guys would not be amenable to structuring a a retainer agreement for fixed early cost?
No, we're not doing that anymore with our clients. What I will tell you is I'm not gonna bill you for travel time for coming to town meetings or or your regular uh activities. I I may bill you for my travel time for extraordinary things, but not for coming to town meeting. You guys have one or two town meetings a year?
Well, theoretically.
So we have one annual town meeting, and we usually have about one special town meeting.
Okay. So, you know, that's that's Stockbridge as well. They usually have have two as well, and I will always be there for for town meetings.
I think that's, that answered all the questions that I had about you. Are there any members of public that have questions that they'd like the board to ask? Uh, answer?
Um, I have about three questions. Um, maybe thinking about if you give the board advice, and they don't follow it, and you are going to deal with the issues from not following it. When you give them the advice, do you tell them at that time, this is what you should do, because if you don't, this will be the fallout? This, you know, this is the potential issues that you could have if you don't follow this advice?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I will say, um, I I'm not gonna say this is what you should do in that, that long.
I know, but I'm just, but yeah. But there are obvious reasons of just cutting to the chase, making it simple.
Yeah, that's what I did Monday night at the Stockbridge town meeting. They were discussing whether or not to to pay um an amount that was due under a contract. And I said, I I really don't wanna see Stockbridge breach uh enforceable contracts. So, you know, but thankfully, they voted to abide by the contract. But that's the kind of thing I will say.
I have two quick questions. Um, basically, uh KP Law fired Monterey.
Mm-hmm.
And you're a professional. Um, in your professional opinion, um, what is your thought process and why a law firm such as KP, who specializes in municipalities, would fire Monterey? And what do you do if the select board doesn't, you know, act as a public body, based upon the advice that you've given them?
Um, so I I don't wanna comment on KP Law's um actions. I I did read the letter that they submitted, and I I can say nothing other than what they've said. But uh, if a, if a public body is not acting as a public body, again, all I can do is advise. And my advice goes to the board. I don't represent any individual member of the board. And sometimes that can be hard for uh the lawyer or the board members to keep in mind. And then the relationship can break down. But my job is to do my best to make sure that doesn't happen. And to give the best advice I can that is in the best interest of the board and the town.
Thank you. And.
Does that answer your question?
And by the way, uh, I I'm the only remaining member of the board that caused KP to resign me. So two-thirds of that board is no longer with us. So I will try to not be a a problem uh for council.
I don't try not to be proud too. Who knows?
Um. Yeah, thank you. I think that that was a really.
Oh, you got one more.
Other than the annual town meeting, are there any other foreseeable events where we would need council to be in person?
Um, I think, I mean, from your experiences i- in in Stockbridge, I don't know how you said, it sounds like you're there sometimes in person upon request or on or on Zoom. Um, I don't, I think those matters usually just arrive, come up as they come up, right? I I don't, I can't predict any.
Sure, yeah, nobody has a crystal ball. I understand that.
But no, I can't think of anything that would come up on a recurring basis, other than meetings that would require me to be here.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just writing that down, so I think I can ask the same question to other people we're interviewing.
Well, thank you very much for interviewing and pulling down Monterey.
Sure, my pleasure.
I guess we're, we're hoping to make a decision in the next couple of weeks, so we'll reach out to you and.
I'll get that list to you of uh people that you can contact and um if there's any questions that come up, that I'd love to work with the town of Monterey.
Thank you. So we really appreciate it. You sound like you have a lot of relevant experience, which would be great.
I really enjoy municipal law, I gotta say. What you love about, and I'm sure you found it in your job, and you're finding it out, is that the range of topics that you go from in the course of the day are just remarkable. So you get to be a jack of all trades in in the legal business. And I can go from several rights to municipal bonds to issues with signs to, you know, buying open space. And and it's just um keeps, keeps it interesting.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Good luck, guys. Take care.
We're gonna need it.
Nice to meet you all.
Okay, so I think.
We got Coleman.
Coleman is scheduled for seven o'clock.
Seven, okay.
And so he's not there yet.
I don't s- I don't see it. So let's continue on with.
Just for the public to know, in addition to the interview at seven with Coleman, there is a third attorney, well, uh, the third law firm that interviewed at nine AM Monday morning. Um, oh, you're Mead Hallerman and Costas, did I get that right? Um, yeah, who the, they're now a council of record for all firms. Um, so, yeah.
And if you wanna start your week off with some excitement. Monday here. Um, and also to uh complete the loop, uh, the board authorized me to reach out to KP at our meeting on, we had a meeting on Monday with the finance committee, and we were discussing town council negotiations, so I have reached out uh to Attorney Riley and asked if they would be willing to stay with Monterey on the basis that the board has changed. And I have not heard that yet, but that will factor into the into the process of selecting a new town council.
Um, on that topic, you were also gonna reach out to them about the bill and a bunch of the items on the bill we thought fell into the retainer.
Yeah, that's on the, that's on the uh agenda.
Agenda, okay, okay.
Um, yeah, I had to reach out to them, look, for a few things on this. Alright, so that's, we're gonna put the town council interviews on pause until seven o'clock. Unless our other interviewee shows up earlier.
We're doing four.
So yeah, four is Green and Hayford Bill. So it was my responsibility to reach out to council and ask about our or their understanding of our obligation to pay that bill. I have been picking away at a couple of other items, so I haven't asked them that question yet. I'm trying to dispute one bill at a time here. Um, but, so I will reach out as soon as, I mean, I guess I'm also waiting at this point to see if they're interested, or if they would be open to continuing in Monterey, but I will ask that as soon as I can ask one question at a time, I don't overload them. Um, KP Law bill. So I got, I emailed Attorney Riley, and I asked him about, I said, we have some confusions, and we think some things on this invoice are related to general services. And he said, that is certainly possible. Any chance you could scan me a copy with a mark next to the entries you think should be general? Then I can compare notes with Brian Mazur and get back to you. So I have brought with me.
I think I, I did, do you, like, um, for Monday's meeting? I worked up a document and sent it to everybody?
Yeah, so I have my own, I have a list, and I just wanted to check out from here.
Yeah.
So I had, and if we agree, or whatever we come to an agreement on, I will send, send to a kind of a response to get.
Don't, I can't run my email, but I can load my end documents, so.
I was hoping that he would offer his list first.
Yeah.
But no such luck.
And I'm not finding the, I'm gonna, I'm like.
Well, I could, and I, I, I think.
Did you mark those?
Yeah, it's pretty clear to me what is definitely unrelated to the investigation.
Right.
There's a couple fringe uh cases. I tried, I highlighted them if I thought they were fringe, and if worse comes to worse, they will.
This, if, this one, they could argue it was if the minutes were.
Were the minutes about the investigation? Sure, they were, but the, the question was fundamentally about what do you do if you can't get a set of minutes approved, which I think is something that should be kind of recovered under the retainer agreement. As I read it, I don't know where they are, so.
Right, but.
We'll just, I, you know, if it's more or less, I'll just mark them and we'll have to tape that up in the next meeting. But I just wanted to run that list by you. I think it's, you know, pretty straightforward.
You've got all the ones that I had too.
Okay, so I will ju- uh send that list back as requested with the charges that we think should be covered, covered under the retainer agreement. with the charges that we think should be covered under the retainer agreement. And that is it for old business. We're going to have to take up the last four, we're going to have to take up the last four items under old business again, which is fine. But we've made some progress, which is good. Okay, and since we still are waiting on interview, we might as well jump right into new business. So Austin Moska, Highway Four appointment.
So recommending you appoint him to start on July 5th at nineteen dollars an hour with a three-month probationary period.
And so is the recommendation for a three-month appointment or just a, an indefinite appointment with a three-month probationary? Okay, an indefinite. Okay, nineteen dollars an hour. So I would make a motion to appoint Austin Moska to the Highway Four position beginning on July 5th. An indefinite appointment with a three-month probationary period and beginning at a rate of nineteen dollars an hour.
Second.
Any comments before we continue? Nancy?
Was he interviewed? Did you interview him?
I did not interview him. I believe that Melissa and Jim, when they made, before they made prior to making the recommendation.
How many applicants did you have for the job postings?
We had two.
And how long was the job posted?
We had some changes where people were moved from different positions, but I'd say probably a total of four months at least.
Oh, goodness. And what made this candidate distinctive?
Jim is familiar with him from the, the fire department and feels that he's a good candidate and to learn. The position he presented very well and he's very eager to take one here.
And he hasn't necessary licenses?
He does not, but this is only a labor position that doesn't require the licenses.
Ah, okay.
That's, that's the next item is moving Tyler up to this.
Is he, did you have the sense that he would be willing to?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, we asked him. He's very interested, so we have a plan set forth for achieving those goals.
Where was his job advertised?
Facebook, Shoppers Guide, the website.
Is that like a, I don't even know, I have no idea. Is there a trade organization? That's not the right thing, but is there a group of, like, operations directors or?
There's a Highway Superintendent's Association, yes.
And he wouldn't have heard of through that? No, no, of course not. I'm just wondering if that group has a, like, sometimes, I'm thinking of professional groups, right? But a lot of professional groups in the sciences have a place where they post jobs because everybody knows that it's like a, you know, a central clearinghouse, as you will, if you will. That doesn't mean it only gets posted there. But I'm just wondering if there's any, like, obviously, those, it's a different group because one's a professional level and the other one's a not professional level. But I just was curious if there were other venues for advertising? Because I'd like to see us get more than two applicants for jobs.
We would like that too.
I know.
It's tough when our positions don't pay anywhere near as much as the private sector when you have all those licenses. You know, we're starting at nineteen to twenty-three dollars an hour and you can go work for Wilkinson's or Tryon's for twenty-eight to thirty dollars an hour. You know, it's hard to compete with that.
Lots of nodding. Okay, thank you.
Hey, so that motion is seconded on the floor to appoint Austin Moska, Highway Four.
I move to appoint Austin Moska, Highway Four?
It's moved and seconded, so we'll call a vote.
I vote yes.
And Justin will also vote yes. The appointment is made. The next item on the agenda, since we have two people at Highway Four, is to move Tyler Collins to Highway Three position. So his, at this point in time, though, it's the same rate?
It'll be the same rate. He actually went today to take his CDLA test. Unfortunately, they ran out of time, so he has to continue the next day. But once he successfully does that, we're recommending a ten-dollar-an-hour raise as well with the bump to this position.
All right, so, but at this point, it's not a, it's not a rate change at the moment?
No, it's just a, just a...
So I would move that we move Tyler Collins position on July 5th or today?
No, effective immediately.
Effective immediately. And that's an indefinite appointment.
Second, sorry.
All right, any other, any comments? All right, I will vote yes on that motion.
And I do too, yes.
And the motion carries. The next thing that we can try to... Attorney Coleman, are you on the call by any chance? I didn't expect so, but...
We're sort of asking.
Because we're kind of sneaking, we have four minutes.
It'll be tight, but we can at least start the conversation.
Are there any, if we want to discuss bulky waste pricing, we have a recommendation and these new prices would take effect on July 1st, 2022. Are there...
So would you like me to give a brief report of the transportation committee meeting process? Was basically, in a continuing effort to simplify flow and make things simple and uniform at the transfer station, we've had a very, I won't say it's piecemeal, but a very complicated system where the transfer station operators had to constantly be making decisions about how they were going to price various bulky items. So, you know, this, how big was the TV? Was it at this price or at that price? And there were a lot of decisions that had to be made about that. And we felt like it should be more uniform, there should be greater clarity. Yeah, we need to be able to allow them to make some on-the-spot decisions. But we really felt the simpler it was, the better, as long as people are recognizing the importance of paying for what they're disposing for and that the town would recover costs for the larger items. So those were our goals. It was really interesting that all the members came up with pricing schemes independently and they were very, like, remarkably in line with each other. There was very little difference. And I looked at basically the pricing schemes for how many different places that I put on that thing?
Eight or ten.
Eight or ten nearby towns. And there was some variability, but in the end, I think we were impressed that we actually came up with very in-line things. And I think it will make, like, a lot easier for the attendants at the transfer station, so.
I might as well read it since it's short and if the, to see if the public has any input. So a fluorescent or mercury item would have no charge. Electronics, twenty dollars. Cell phones, no charge. A mattress or a box spring is twenty dollars each. Stuffed furniture, twenty-five dollars. Appliances, small equipment, fifteen dollars. Items containing refrigerant, twenty-five dollars. Demo debris in a forty-five gallon can, ten dollars. Demo debris, demo debris in a six-foot truck bed, fifty dollars. Demo debris in an eight-foot truck bed, seventy-five dollars. Car batteries, no charge. Tires, I don't...
Passengers.
A tire of a passenger vehicle is a ten dollar each, so I imagine you can't bring a large tractor tire. I don't know. Any thoughts or comments on that pricing scheme? I think it's a little bit more straightforward for the attendants.
That was our goal.
I would move to accept these recommended bulky waste prices beginning July 1st, 2022.
Second.
One quick question on that. Dump stickers, still the same fee?
Yeah, that happened at a previous meeting.
Yeah, we set the fee at seventy-five dollars.
That's totally reasonable.
And we have a seconded motion. If there's no other comments, we'll call a vote. Nancy?
How do we pay those fees when we go there? Do we pay it, do we get a receipt from them or?
It's a really good question. Right now, we haven't changed that system, but, so this is a definite work in progress. And even when this finishes, there's a lot more work to do about the transportation, but we are working to get cash out of the transfer station.
Right.
Right now, that system hasn't changed, but we're, Melissa is working with the accountant and with the bank. We're trying to get the ability to take credit cards up there. And people would also be able to, to be...
We didn't talk about that yet.
We haven't talked about coming in here yet. So right now, we're focused on trying to be able to have the ability to take credit debit cards up there with a handheld that would allow immediate receipt delivery and would have a record of those things so that all that would be taken care of and it wouldn't be somebody having to write it out in another place, not being able to see what they're looking, what they're dealing with while others are doing it.
That's a good idea, that the town's going to also get hit with fees from the credit card companies. About three to six percent. We're not allowed to pay the fees, so it goes to the customer. Yeah, because it's going to be a three percent on a credit card.
So we're going to put this discussion on pause. I know we have a seconded motion on the floor, but we have a, an interview with Attorney Coleman. Thank you for joining us. Attorney Coleman?
Can you hear us, Mr. Coleman?
He's talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm all set now, thank you.
Hi.
Really, thank you.
Thank you for joining us. We received your proposal for town council application and thank you for submitting that. And we've also, or I guess I'm the only member who is still on the board, but we interviewed you last summer, so thank you for coming back. Would you like to make a presentation? I know that you've had a very long career and so that might be difficult. But if you'd like to make a, a presentation on why you think, why you applied to work for Monterey as our town council, that would be great.
I'll be glad to make it short because I know you have a long meeting and you don't want to hear it louder than it's app on. Hello? We, are we together?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you intimately.
Okay. Okay, so, so basically, I've devoted my life to municipal law, representing towns, preferably smaller towns. And I grew it to representing one hundred and twenty-five towns and in special counsel to about another seventy-five hundred, seventy-five or a hundred. And the problem was being the, I was hiring and growing the business and being like a town administrator, I worried about the rent. I worried about the health insurance, et cetera, that I was finding that I wasn't doing what I liked to do, which is practice law. So what I, what I would do is take new towns and just understand them best and try to find the best fit for them within the firm. But now that I have left, as I mentioned in my letter, I decided to leave. And then what happened is one of the towns that I had was just, said, "What'll it take to get you?" And they asked me to refer them to other council, which I did, and they weren't happy with the firm I was with. And so they finally said, "What'll it take to get you?" as our town council. So I ended up doing it and coming back. So that's what I do. I try to use common sense and try to understand what the selectmen want, make sure they have all the options that they should have and understand the pros and cons of each and can measure the rate of success of any one of their items. I will, I will give them a pretty good percentage of whether it'll work or not work, or if it's in court, whether you'll win or lose, and what it'll cost to get there if this is larger or other than just, you know, an hour. So basically, that's what I do. And I try to figure out, I was, I wanted to represent small towns. I was the one who opened up an office. In fact, originally at Pittsfield, I hired the former mayor, Riley, who was a terrific guy, I worked with him on cable TV. And, and he, basically, we grew it and I, and I had started off actually representing a couple towns out in the North Hampton area. And my firm was wondering, "What the hell are you doing that for?" And I really found it was really interesting to represent the small towns. It was, it was, it was like I was really practicing law the way I wanted to practice. And we grew it. And so basically, that's what I do. And in fact, more recently, I became council a couple of years ago to Royals, to, to New Braintree. New Braintree have a thousand three people. They're now a little under a thousand, they're about your size. And it inherited a lot of litigation. They had the same firm you had. And so I made most of it go away and just do all of it and trying to settle the last matter that's out there. And basically, it works well. I have a, I have a very good relationship with the then-chair. He just decided not to run. And we would chat, and I don't talk, I don't charge for talking to selectmen or to talk to the town administrator and try to find out what you really want to do. And basically, my job is to get it done. So that's, that's how I operate and it, and it works well. And I, and you could tell by the fact that I was able to grow a very large firm and hopefully, most of them were satisfied and pleased. And sad part is some of them still call me up and ask me for help on different matters. And I tell them that they're in good hands and I will just sort of help them through that big problem that they have. So I'm not looking to do any more big towns. It's not what I want to do for the rest of my career. So your town is perfect. I had a choice to do this by Zoom last time and I said, "No, I'm coming out. You shouldn't be hiring a lawyer that you haven't at least met." So I only have met one of you. But basically, I would have been glad to have come out. And that's my story.
So thank you for joining us remotely. And I guess my first question would be, since you have been town council to so many towns over such a long period of time, I imagine you have a pretty general expertise and pretty comprehensive understanding of issues that can come up. You did mention in your proposal, an attorney, Jack Dolan, who you source or who you use for labor work and personnel issues. Is that the only area that you use in another attorney at your craft?
Yes, I, I'm not a labor lawyer. I do, I'm not really, I know what things are right or wrong, but I'm just really, I would not recommend me as your labor lawyer. And you currently, Jack Dolan came from K&amp;P, the Coleman Page. I hired him. He's terrific. And, but I understand you use Brian Mazur, is it, is he your labor lawyer?
That is, yeah, that's the case. We had Attorney Riley as our primary contact and Mazur as our secondary contact who got quite involved.
Yeah, yeah, but Brian's, I hired him. And I think he's a good lawyer. And if the town administrator really wants to work with him, because I imagine it's a, it's a close relationship with the administrator, I'd have no problem. And in fact, if the firm didn't want to do it, I'd be glad to call up Brian and ask him as if, you know, that, you know, I said, "They really want you, I'm going to work with, you know, I'll help and, and I'll do it. If that's what you want, I'd be glad to do that." So I have no, nothing in the, in the, in the game, as it were, in terms of labor. I just want the best, I just want the town to be satisfied with the legal services that you're, you're going to get, especially if they come from my office. And my, also, my office has, what, our, I actually came to our leading competitor. We used to compete. It was part of a larger firm and it did a lot of schoolwork. And so we don't do schoolwork. But anyway, so Paul DeRencis is a terrific lawyer and I can't begin to tell you, I think we make a good team and I think that the lawyers, they are terrific. Some of them I hired from Coleman Page.
I also noticed uniquely about your proposal, especially with your level of experience and expertise, was you're very competitive, two-hundred-dollar-per-hour rate and not charging for anything under a quarter of an hour. Uh, is that something that you find works for, uh, your engagements with towns?
No, it, it actually would work. Uh, uh, I, I could use it. And to be honest with you, I did not want to do it for X dollars. I mean, you, you had asked in the, you know, to, to give both and I did not want to work for the town for X dollars. I think that's really problematic. Why? Because if you work for X dollars, then someone's gonna say, well, it doesn't cost anything. Ask town council. And it just grows and grows and gets too dependent on town council. Secondly, uh, town council gets nervous if there's a lot of cases going on and the thing starts growing big. Uh, and what they try to do is continue anything they can to another, another fiscal year, uh, and try to wrap it up. Uh, so my sense is that it's not in the best interest of towns. Uh, it was started by one firm and, um, uh, and some towns like it. It just doesn't really, it's not in the best interest of towns. So I try to figure out, what could I do? What could I do that could get you out of that system and, and do, be, be fair? And, and usually, when, when I had to take, when, when the, I was there, when we had a big problem, that was ten years ago. Uh, there was a crisis and the cities and towns are very short of money. So I, I knew the towns well, so I knew what I could do for X dollars. And I did it, uh, for some of the towns on the conditions for one year and then for two at some of them. And it wasn't, it wasn't really, it wasn't the best of situations for them or us. But that being said, I figured if I charged for a quarter of an hour, it tells you that I'm not charging for a, a, a phone call, a quick phone call or try to, you know, give you some knowledge about something or maybe it's practical advice. And I don't mind doing that. I like to do that. If it keeps you out of trouble and keeps things smooth, I'm delighted. That's what I do. That's, I'm to be delighted to do it. So I figured that rather than doing a six, uh, of an hour, every six minutes, a tenth of an hour. It, it just didn't, it just didn't make sense to me. And also, um, sometimes I can do things in one to two minutes and what am I gonna do? Put down one tenth? Uh, I don't know. This, and then it's a lot of bookkeeping. I gotta worry about writing what I've done and all that sort of stuff. It's not worth the effort. It's much easier for me and much more pleasant to be a, be a lawyer. And let, let's put it where it's at. I, I'd be a country lawyer and you're a country town.
Mr. Copelman, um, how do you recommend to towns that they structure the lines of communication between, um, the towns?
That's, um, that's a. No, that's a very good question because that's important, that you have control over it. You don't want two competing, a lot of people calling town council up. So I think it, I have no problem from accepting any call from, from the board of selectmen, any members of the board. And none certainly from the town administrator. And if somebody else wants to, to, uh, use town council, I really believe they should go to the board or the administrator to get permission. I know that because, you know, since, well, someone will say, well, I'm the chairman of the planning board or I'm the chairman of the zoning board, I'm the chairman of this board or that board. And they, they should. You should be very generous with them. But on the other side of the coin, uh, you want to make sure it's really a board vote. Let's, let's get together and find out what's, how to deal with this. Uh, and, and I will try to give them a, a practical way of dealing with it, one that'll keep them out of litigation and do it fast. Once I get to know the person, they may feel comfortable calling me with a quick question that I'd have no problem, so long as it's not gonna be a charged question, uh, where I'd have to charge for it to just give them some quick advice. So I, I'd like to develop a relationship.
As a follow-up to that, um, would you be comfortable putting, making sure that there's a written component to your responses? So that, um, I, I wanna make sure there's clear lines of communication within town hall as well. Because in the past, there's been some miscommunication and I feel like having written communications is one way to alleviate that problem so that everybody has, can look at the same material and be clear on what it was.
Yeah, so.
Would that be something you'd be comfortable with?
I'd be glad to do that. In fact, what, if I were to send anything out for them, I would CC, uh, the board of selectmen and administrator or whichever way you want me to do it, both or, or just one of the few, uh, I'd be glad to do it. So anything that works, I'm more than happy to do it. It's, it's no, no big deal.
So, a, and generally, you know, I think you discussed why a fixed fee agreement doesn't make sense for the council or the town. But it is something that our town is familiar with and has been using that kind of a payment agreement for a long time. And so there is some level of discomfort, I think, in, in departing, uh, from that structure. Typically, uh, do towns that you service, uh, run within the budget? Or are they frequently making reserve fund transfer requests to, to cover additional fees? Uh, how, how does that work for you?
I have found that for town council work, it usually, uh, ends up for less than what they would have budgeted. Uh, but for, to litigation, there's no limit up, depending on how far you want to go with it and, you know, what, what happens. That's why I think that it's really important to get a lawyer who understands litigation. I know I understand litigation, but I was appointed by the Superior Court Chief Justice to sit on cases and actually hear them, and beside them, uh, in a courtroom. And they had a right. I was a master in this, in the Superior Court. And I got a feel for it and I know, believe me, I understand what is gonna happen. I'm probably ninety-nine percent certain of what will happen when I hear about a case and what it'll cost to get there, because the cost is important too. So I just want to make sure that you know what I know. In other words, that I can tell you that if you go further, this is what it'll cost and this is the likelihood of success. And, but I'll also tell you if there's a cheap way of handling it. In other words, some, some sort of compromise. And that's where I think your value is, if someone knows what they're doing.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, Susan?
Um, Mr. Copelman, would you be willing to provide us with contacts, um, at the various towns you currently work with?
Sure, be glad to do that.
That would be great.
Sure.
Are there any that's a public, like the board?
Yeah, because I, I'll say, do you?
I think that answered all of my, that I, you've answered all of my questions, Attorney Copelman. Thank you for joining us. And we are hoping to make an appointment in the next couple of weeks and we'll, uh, get that, get those references from you. Thank you for sending those. Uh, and I think you've answered all of our questions and if you're all set, then thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you for allowing me to come, uh, before you, at least, uh, now, now it's by Zoom and by, you know, thank you.
I haven't forgotten your in-person interview either, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Have a good evening.
So we have now done our council interviews and I had put on pause. And there was a motion, a second in motion on the floor to accept the recommendation of, of prices. And the last bit of discussion, I recall, which I think is something worth fleshing out, was that, uh, actually not entirely related to this, but, uh, tangentially, if we start accepting forms of payment, electronic credit card form of payment at the transfer station, if there's any fees, those will be added on, it seems like. So if it's twenty dollars for a mattress and you have twenty dollars in cash, you pay twenty dollars in cash. But if we're not doing cash and you have a credit card and the credit card dollars, three dol, credit card fee is three dollars, you pay twenty-three dollars for the credit card?
It'd be similar to the tax payments that you can accept online. I believe the fees aren't quite that high. I think they're slightly lower depending, especially since most of these items would be under a hundred dollars.
Is the fee structure the same for debit or credit by the way?
Yes.
And, uh, Terry, do you have any?
No, I'm just gonna say the town should look into Venmo and of course, check, and then there wouldn't be any credit card fees.
Uh, and actually, we're doing both, we're looking into both Venmo and Apple Pay and there, wasn't there a third one?
Zelle? There's Zelle, I can't remember what the name of it was.
Will this be posted in the Monterey news, these fees, so people know what it's gonna cost?
They will, but it hadn't been approved yet, so.
When it is approved, yes.
Yes, and I will be.
And it's also, it'll be included with the letter with your stickers.
Excellent.
And they're not effective until July one.
Okay, thank you.
And it'll probably be on the website too.
Okay.
So there will be numerous places. And in some ways, I think this is good because sometimes you, you'd go to the transfer station, you, there'd be a range in your head of how much you're gonna pay, but this will be a little bit easier to get an estimate on and the transfer station committee will work on the different types of payment.
It's, we're, it's still under discussion and it's an active, I won't call it debate, an active discussion. And hopefully, we'll come up with some good plans. And if you do have any particular thoughts about it, please email me, um, because it, we're not trying to exclude anybody and I'm, I'm always interested in everybody's opinion on stuff. Sometimes you get really good ideas that way.
Okay, and there's a motion on the floor and I believe we've had a discussion, uh, so I'll call a vote and I will vote yes on accepting the multi-waste pricing recommendation.
Yes.
And Susan votes yes and the motion carries. Vacation carryovers, um, to the select board from full-time employees regarding the vacation carryover request. The following full-time employees are going to have vacation time remaining from their fiscal year twenty-two allocation that they would like to carry forward into fiscal year twenty-three. Brian Fady, six days, Gareth Backus, ten days, Pete Wilson, fifteen days, Melissa No, eight point five days, six point five of which are being used in July, and Jim Hunt, four point six two five days, all of which are being used in July. And I think the relevant part of the handbook says, paid vacation must be taken in the year in which it is credited, unless prior approval has been received from the select board to carry it over into the next year, which would be what we're doing. Do you have any?
Um, my one question is due to officer resignation. What does that mean?
Uh, yes, unfortunately, the officer disappointed, Mitchell Hamilton, has taken a job somewhere else.
Okay.
Full-time, I believe.
Ah, so Gareth has extra, because he had to work extra hours, so, okay, now I get it.
There was already vacation scheduled for June and now Gareth has to cover it.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. Um, that, that makes sense. Um, fifteen days is a lot. Why is Mr. Wilson not?
He's, he's going to try to use them before, um, July, but just to make sure that he is covered.
I wasn't suggesting to not do it. I was just, basically, I think people need to take vacation. It's important.
Well, I think it's also, in the handbook, it says that, you know, people who work for the highway department can't necessarily take vacation in the winter. And we only hired Pete, uh, right before the winter.
Oh goodness, okay. Well, I retract anything I might have said thereupon, um, absolutely, so.
So, uh, I will make a motion to, uh, approve this request for vacation carryover as listed here and as I read off.
Seconded.
Is there any further discussion? Uh, vote yes.
Yes.
Police and fire accident insurance renewal. So we have insurance from my cabinet risk strategies, um, about police and fire accident coverage. I didn't, I don't have any problems with it, but do you have any questions?
Any significant changes from previous years? Um, I didn't really have anything either. It, it looks like an insurance policy, kind of standard stuff, so, um, I moved it where you put it.
Second, any further discussion? Uh, I will vote yes.
Yes.
And the motion to renew the police and fire accident insurance carries. Regular hours for employees and proper notification of vacation time. I believe, Susan, this is something that you added to the meeting note.
Yep, um, so, um, did Terry, did not submit anything to me. I, I actually had a conversation with the other, for the other day and asked, I think that it, now that the investigation is over, I, I think that it's time for the court to actually have hours and to keep hours as an employee of the town. And I actually asked her to submit, um, a list of the hours she would like to work so that we could consider them. Um, I have not received any such list. Have you?
No, I think, um, that is correct. We did have an agreement, or the previous select board had an agreement with the clerk, that the clerk was not keeping office hours, um, until the investigation was over. So now, is Terry available here? Does she want, want to be at the meeting or?
I, I did ask her if she would come to the meeting. Can we, can somebody go? I, I would physically go and get her, but I, I can't easily do that. It's so many, yeah, I can't. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just think it's time.
I have a question. Yeah, regular hours for employees and proper notification, is that what we're working on right now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I don't see Terry's name on here in the agenda.
It's not, and.
So why is she being called upon?
Because I did ask that she attend the meeting because at this.
But she's not on your agenda, Susan.
She was informed that.
Was she given a formal written notice, not anything? I'm just, um, you know, there's policies and procedures that need to be filed and her name is not on this agenda.
Susan, you actually asked me to notify all the employees and I feel that I'm not as interested, but you specifically asked for Terry to attend.
I did, and I believe she was given.
So this actually pertains to all employees.
So was she also given a?
Who else is here then? What other employees is listed? Why aren't your names listed? Well, then why aren't your name on here as well?
This is just to discuss hours and vacation requests.
Right, but you're calling upon Terry solely. I don't see anybody else here.
Because as, as far as I know at this moment, the only individual who doesn't have posted hours that they keep is the clerk.
Well, then her name would be on here.
But it's.
Well, and that's.
We did postpone it to this week.
So I think there was a, there was a particular agreement of the select board with the clerk, who for years had kept all of his hours that she had. Here she is. Um, but the select board did have an agreement with the clerk. I forgot what.
Her name's not on this agenda.
Um, that, the fact that a particular person's name is not on the agenda does not mean you cannot have a conversation with them, Nancy.
Oh, I don't know about that. You may wanna double check that.
So, um, Terry, it's my, it's my understanding that, um, the select board met with you, I forget what month it was. It was a few months ago, um, I was at the meeting and we agreed that you wouldn't have any posted office hours. Uh, we, we, we came to an agreement between the select board and you that you wouldn't have any posted office hours. While the investigation was ongoing, um, which, uh, the investigation has concluded. And so I guess there is an inquiry as to, uh, if you'd be willing to submit some, uh, agreed upon office hours that work for you.
I'm not going to discuss that tonight. That's all I have to say.
Okay, um, so we did have a conversation earlier this week and, um, we, I asked you if you would submit, uh, in writing, the hours you thought would work and I, I haven't received anything, so I'd really appreciate it if by next week you could do that and we'll formally put you on the agenda for next week. I will, I will make sure that you get a written notification, but consider this the oral notification because I don't, I, I would like to be able to give you office hours, but it's difficult to do that. And I, I'd like them to be office hours you're comfortable with. But I think it's appropriate for the town to have a clerk that has posted office hours and works those hours. We need to work out a system that works. But I would like it to have your, uh, I wanna respect your preferences, but I can't do that without an indication of what hours you'd be comfortable working. Um, so I would appreciate it if you could provide that by the meeting next week.
Okay, so, um, it's, so it sounds like.
Could you please answer verbally? Because I, I don't, I don't know what your silence indicates.
I have, I'm not speaking about this tonight.
Okay. Do you, do you understand what I've asked of you?
I understand when you and I, when I called to give you office hours, you hadn't, you weren't concerned. You were concerned more about other things like me taking. you hadn't, you weren't concerned, you were concerned more about other things, like me taking too long to count the ballots. So it was a bad conversation, because I called nicely to talk to you because Justin asked me to call, and tonight I'm not, I'm, I'm not speaking about my office hours tonight.
Okay, I, I actually had several issues when we spoke, so perhaps we remember the conversation differently. You were offering the office hours, and I, I asked you to put them in writing, because honestly, where I was sitting when you called with my girlfriend I got, I literally had nothing to write with. So even if I had wanted to write down the hours so I could remember them, I could not have done so. I apologize for not being completely mobile, but it was a fact of my life. So I, I would like to cure those hours, I just had no way to write them down. And I was never gonna remember them accurately. That was why I asked you to put them in writing, no other reason, I wanted to make sure that I could be accurate.
So I think this is something that we can continue, uh, next week, uh, consider a proposal and properly post it on the agenda, and and we, or we can, or we can, I mean, we can discuss any, uh, concerns that you have, or what, what works for you. I know that it's going to be a busy summer and fall for the clerk with.
And elections, yeah.
A number of elections coming up, which is one of the next things on the agenda, and so we, I, well, I can only speak for myself, but want to have a, a solution that works for you and worked, works for, for the town, and accommodate, um, hours, if, you know, taking into consideration what, what works for you. But we, we can continue this, uh, next week, if, does that make sense, does that work?
I'll, I'll tell you, um, either next week or the week after.
Okay, um, and.
Um, I, I also, when we spoke, I also asked if you, I think it's important that your workplace be a place that you are, um, comfortable, but I also think it's important that you be able to come before the select board with issues. And, um, I asked you at that time, and I'm now asking formally in public, if you could also, in addition to your suggested hours, give us some information about what we can do to make the workplace comfortable for you. And, um, thirdly, what we could do to make a public forum, or coming before this live board, comfortable for you. Because I think it's important that you be able to speak with us, but I don't know how to accommodate you if I don't know what would be helpful. So I'm asking for your guidance on what would make that venue more comfortable. I, I can't necessarily close a meeting to the public, 'cause that's not an option in an OML situation, but I, I would like to know what those things are, so, 'cause I can't provide what I don't know. That was why I asked.
And I, I, uh, I hope that we're headed in, in the right direction to accommodate everybody and take in, into consideration, and I think one of the things is that's tricky for all of us involved is that, it's been a very difficult year, and we, it's, it's difficult to confront, uh, challenges that we've been facing, and we're left with a lot of the problems that of former select boards, uh, you know, didn't necessarily resolve. And we need to move forward in a way that accounts for the realities of the past, but I think moves us forward, in a more positive way, which is a very hard line to walk, to not dwell on the past, but to, try to take it into account in how to move forward in a better way. It's very tricky, if anyone has any suggestions, uh, please let me know. But I, I hope that we can all give each other the benefit of the doubt and assume the best, and that doesn't mean, you know, we can still come to the conclusion that someone else, you know, did something wrong and should be held accountable, but we can begin with the benefit of the doubt, I hope, and assume, and assume the best of each other going forward in this very difficult situation. And we'll take up particular hours, uh, requests in next week or two, does that sound good to?
Can we make it a date certain, rather than a week or two could be, oh, well, not this week, not this week? I, I'd like to actually have it date certain, 'cause it seems like another week should be enough to actually come up with a list of office hours that doesn't seem an insurmountable thing.
So do you think it's something that we could discuss next week?
No, not next week.
Okay, so, that would put us on, um, June 1st, is, is, does June 1st work?
Possibly, yeah, I try.
Is that yes or no?
It's a possibility.
I don't want to be put in this position, but I feel like, um, if you can't commit, then I'm gonna ask that we set hours on that date anyway, because I don't, the previous board allowed a lot of things to be kicked down the throat. And I would like to start as I need to continue, and when an issue is before us, I would like to see us do our best to work on it in a consistent way to come to conclusion. You already see the people have noticed in the past two weeks, we're getting through stuff. Sometimes we have to come back and address it again, but I would like to at least begin that conversation on a date certain, so that we can proceed to, so that the town moderate can have posted office hours through the town board. That's all I'm trying to do.
What, what has happened since the investigation to make me feel safe and take this anxiety away that I've had since July? What has the town done? What has the select board done?
This is a good question, so, we are in process of pursuing HR, we don't have it yet. I will tell you that I've already, I spent several hours today, um, trying to track down potential mediators. Um, it's like, I literally started that process today, and it's gonna take a little while to find somebody, but I'm doing it. I really think it's important that we find somebody good, it would be, I, I feel it's important that that person be able to physically be here and not be remote. Um, I was encouraged that there actually are, there are a lot more potential resources than I expected, um, which means we have to comb through them, but it also means we have options, which personally I think is a good thing. I expected them to all be, um, lawyers that had training, but it turns out there are people with pretty varied backgrounds. I think it's important to have someone that's really good with people and isn't just trying to mitigate litigation, but is trying to help people, um, figure out how to work better with each other, because I think that's an interpersonal skill, that's not necessarily one that's for the courtroom. So that's what I've been doing, and I'm gonna continue to do that, and I'm hoping that I'll be able to come forward by next week with some names of, um, individuals and/or firms that we could then interview for that process.
I think, I think, Terry, uh, you're right that the town as an employer needs to do its part to provide for a, a good workplace, and then the employee, uh, needs to do the work, and it's not a one-sided thing, and certainly the employer, in this case, the select board, has a, a very large challenge in front of it to try to make for a safe and workable environment, and I think one way to begin that process would be discussing with employees, what can we do, um, to move that process forward, because I don't, you know, the board members have some ideas and have been given some recommendations on how to move forward, but I don't, I don't, you know, work in town halls as an employee. So I think maybe one way to begin, since we're requesting office hours, uh, from you, is you can, uh, ask, like, what can we provide to make a good working environment? And maybe we can have those conversations individually and then come up with a plan so that we can fulfill our individual, because it's a two-way, uh, relationship in my mind. And is that something that?
Absolutely, I, I mean, I, I don't think, I think real problems are often complicated and not easy to solve, but un, unless, this is not my wheelhouse, I'm a scientist, right? So I, I don't know a lot about dealing with HR issues, right? I own that, what I know, what I know, at least I know I'm ignorant. That's a start, but, um, but there has to be a process to go forward, and, um, one step at a time. Uh, so I think getting ideas for how we could, um, constructively alter things that would be helpful is useful. We're, we're trying to get HR help, trying to get mediation help, those things are gonna happen, not tomorrow, but probably some of them within the next month, I think, right? The HR, right? That process is on the road.
And one, one thing that dawns on me while we speak of this is, I think one of the failings of last year's select board, uh, was that it's sometimes viewed as relationships with employees or committees, commissions, boards, as kind of a one-way street, like, what are we asking? You know, we need this from this commissioner, from this employee, and we never said, like, what can we provide to get the best, uh, the best relationship? So maybe that's one way that this new board can set itself forward from the, from the past, or is Terry how, uh, from you, how we can move forward in a way that respects you and, and works for you. Does that sound like something that we can work on?
Yes.
Thank you. And that way we can all feel like everyone's getting what they, what's best for them out of the, and it's a good relationship instead of toxic, but it, it certainly, the past, you know, cannot be. Forgot, I mean, yeah, it's something that confronts us, stares us right in the face every day, and it's something that we need, that's going to be a challenge, but I think, hopefully the select, this select board is up for the challenge and can learn from mistakes of, learn from mistakes, that's something I'm trying to do.
Everybody makes them, no question.
Does that settle that, so we can have individual discussions about what Terry expects from the select board, and what the select board expects from Terry, and return to this in, uh, June 1st?
Yes.
All right, good. Num, item number nine, thank you for joining us, Terry.
Is there anything else you, you, if you say you didn't want to say anything, but I just wanna know if you're, if you've changed your mind and there's anything you do want to say, before we move on? Then it's fine if you don't.
No.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
We will come back to that, and item number nine, John Weingold resignation from the select board. So, um, on May 11th, which was last Wednesday, John Weingold submitted a resignation from his position on the select board, and I'll just rate this quick. Along with a long list of former disillusioned and frustrated town employees over the years, based partially on the dysfunction and inaction of a feckless puppet select board, I hereby officially resign my position as a honorary select board member effective immediately. John Weingold, so, and one question that came up to me throughout the week, some people asked, does the select board need to accept the resignation? No, we don't, a resignation from a town office is effective once it reaches the town clerk in writing. And so we, when resignations come up on the select board, we just acknowledge them, uh, because it's part of the town clerk's duties, to my understanding, to share that with other members of the body and with the executive, which is the select board. And so all we do is we put on the agenda, we acknowledge it, but we don't, we don't make any motion to accept the resignation or anything like that. And, uh, over.
Um, you, you may want to ask counsel to, uh, check, chapter 41, section 10 of the laws, because, as I read it, it says if this resignation filed with the town clerk, the town clerk shall certify the vacancy. And my question would be to whether the vacancy has been certified. This secretary seems to be tired.
Well, this says received 5/22, and I know that, um, this is, you know, we've appointed to vacancies before, not, yeah, from resignations. We appointed to the library board of trustees, uh, after resignations last year through appointment by the select board. So we've had no problems with the way that we've been doing it, uh, but I can, I mean, I think certification.
Do we need to request that the, or certified? I mean, she said she received it, what is the difference between certification and?
I don't know, but I, I do, I, I do know that.
No.
I, I think San, San.
You died.
Sandale Field just voted no on a, on having an appointed clerk position, and I think, I'm not saying I support that, but I think the good thing is it keeps the select board's fingers out of the clerk's job, which is really about upholding state law and not following the rules of the select board.
Right.
Uh, so, I think the select board.
Just accept it?
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, we don't, we don't accept it, we just acknowledge it.
We just acknowledge it, okay.
Um, and we'll do that, I mean, there's no motions made or anything like that. Okay, so, number 10 is the vacancy on the select board, so, after the resignation was, I was notified of the resignation, I reached out to town council, and I let him know that there was a vacancy, and I said, it's my understanding that typically the select board has the option to call a special election, as occurred in Sandale Field last year. And if the select board doesn't call a special election, 200 or 20% of the voters in our case can petition for a special election. There's a opinion from counsel here, he more or less said the same thing, but he, he mentioned a way that bills and payroll warrants can be signed if a majority of the selectmen are around to sign them, which I don't think necessarily applies to us. And he mentioned something about caucuses, and the most important part is probably that we need to call an election at least 64 days before the select board votes to set it. I think as someone who operated on the select board that frequently met with only two people, I understand its downsides, um, and I would like to hold, uh, I think it, you know, it'd be, makes sense for the select board to hold a special election to get that third member. I think one of the questions is when do we hold it? The earliest, I, I'm hesitant to set a date today, I, I mean, I, no, I don't want to set a date today, because I know the date on the 64, but I wanna make sure that I'll follow the proper procedure in posting it and probably come up with a date at least before officially setting it, in case there's a conflict or something that we're not aware of.
And I, um, in that conversation previously mentioned, she also mentioned we can't, um, cannot piggyback on the.
State elections.
State elections, including the primary, which would be in September, and the main election, which would be in November. I don't, I don't know if there's clearance around that, like, would that mean we can have an election the week before? But that, that could be problematic.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we, we have to put some thought into actual when.
Yeah, and so, pretty much, since we're not calling a meeting tonight, I think we're pretty much ruled out of July. And then, you know, early September, you're going to have the, the spec, the state primary.
Right.
And so I think, I, just off the top of my head, maybe a, a Tuesday, 12 to 7, to keep things kind of regular. Um, and then August or September, 'cause I know people, I think some people who tend to vacation August, you know, in September, maybe they have schoolchildren, maybe they don't.
I think August is tricky, 'cause it is a big vacation month, as is July for a lot of people.
Yeah, and I think.
Clearly, this is where I vacation, but it's not true of everybody.
And so, and by, like, if we set a meeting tonight, I And so, and but, like, if we set a meeting tonight, I think we'd be talking last week of July. So maybe tentatively, we'll talk like mid to late September or mid-September. And then I think some of the things to consider should be, what kind of burden is it on the election workers?
Yep.
You know, we can't ask them to stay up late counting and then count the next night. What kind of burden is it on the clerk? Actually, but it will be a pretty easy counting because there's only going to be a few weeks. And then caucuses is another.
Right.
People being around in town, what day of the week. So there's a lot of considerations.
Do we know when the, do we know what the timing is of the caucus before the election?
Yes, I believe it's a, we do know. I mean, I know somewhere, but I don't have it on me. But it's like 35 days or something. And there's a, oh, nomination requires, this is a little bit separate, but nomination papers for any office must be filed at least 48, 49 days prior.
Okay.
And we need to give 15 days of notice. So that's where you get the 64.
Right.
But the caucuses are usually called a little bit after the nomination papers are due. And I think, I wanna say like 35 days, but I don't wanna say it because it's probably wrong. Uh, but I have it somewhere.
Do you have something to say about this?
Yeah, Gary.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, uh, the, you know, you mentioned about the undue work for the election workers. It, it's not gonna be a problem. Uh, it was, the, counting the votes this time was a problem because so many of the election workers were on the ballot. So I was, and I usually work from the time the polls open till the time the polls close, and then I stay at camp. And there were several people who do that. So we really didn't have enough people to count the votes. Um, because you need teams of two to be able to do it. There's a caller and a, and a scribe. So for, for this next one, I don't anticipate, uh, any kind of difficulty in counting, in counting the votes.
Well, another thing, uh, that I'm aware of is, because I did count it one time before I was involved in the select board, is you read through the names.
You counted with me.
I, I was there with my partner. On this election, we elected so many people, because we elected five people for the bio review committee. We had vacancies on the library trustee.
There were more than ever before.
And this is gonna be, you know, person A, person B, person A, person B. And it's gonna be one, one question.
Well, that assumes, of course, that there's only two candidates.
Well, there'd be person C, person E, person E.
Well, yeah, that wasn't bad.
It's still one, it's still one position.
One, one race.
One thing, yeah, so.
So, and yeah, and that's how you do it when you, when you call them. You know, it's like person A, person A, person A, person B, writing for Joe Schmo, person A, person B, and you.
Right, yeah. So I guess the question is, how do we move forward in a way? I guess so we have caucus chairs to consult with about holding caucuses. We have the clerk and the election workers registrars to take into account what they might need. We should consider what day and time the halls are open. And then I think at some point, we should probably post on the agenda. And we, of course, we'll get advice from council on exactly how to do this. But, you know, set special election for September 15th or whatever it might be.
Whatever the day.
And for these hours. But that's a lot of different little things. I mean, it's kinda doesn't, it's not that hard of a decision because we're probably just gonna, it's selecting some Tuesday in May, uh, in September from 12 to 7. But, uh, there are some small factors.
Ask the people that are here, and that would include anybody who's listening in. Um, do you have thoughts about spacing an election next to other things? Or any other input regarding what you think is good timing for this meeting?
Breaking my head here.
Yeah.
Sounds good here.
No, I just always worry about like, uh, voter exhaustion. It's not the right word. But, but like, you know, election, 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 election. It's like too many town meetings and people stop coming kind of thing.
Yeah. It's separate stuff, it's the.
One would hope.
You know, the primary, and there's a big hoopla around, around that. And this.
Well, it's not, they're not gonna have to do a lot of work in the ballot box. It's gonna be your own, uh, mind.
Well, yeah, I mean, coming in and just coming in and checking my place.
I, I, you're not gonna get a disagreement from me. It's just a question of whether everybody does their civic duty, which.
So if I understand correctly, what was gonna happen is there'll be a special election to replace, to fill the seat, the vacancy.
The vacancy is, which will only go till the next election because that seat would have been.
When would that second election then be? So this seat.
Yeah.
This special election is to fulfill to the end of the term.
Okay.
This seat is up for its regular end date in, on the first Tuesday after the first Saturday in May of 2023.
Okay.
And so.
So we're talking about regularly, realistically, just a number of months before we would be having another regularly scheduled election. Correct.
And then that term, that second term would be the regular three-year term. Yes, yes, but you're talking, if we do an election in September, for instance, you have October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May.
Yep.
So we're not really most of May, but half a year.
Not insignificant.
Um, I think if we were later, it would be more of a question of if we wanna call one. We haven't formally voted to call a special election, but I think there's a general consensus.
Yeah, it's better part of a year. I, I, I agree. And I, you know, my big concern is in, I, I feel confident that whatever issues come up, we will find compromise. My bigger concern is I'm now much more aware of the fact that something could take me out than I have ever been before since I have been getting bunched pretty badly, and I, I don't mean that literally, um, in the past few months. And if one of us wasn't able to fulfill our duties for any reason, it would make things pretty hard on that one.
It's a good point. That's very.
Um, and so that my, I am mostly motivated by that issue.
Yep.
Um, because I feel confident that we can work through other stuff. Um, but.
You know, given that, maybe we should do it as soon as.
Tomorrow!
But there will be, there will be, for anyone here, and, and it's, there will be plenty of notice uh, as to when it's gonna be, I think hopefully more than the minimum 64 days, which gives people time to do nomination papers, at least 15 days at the very least. Gives time for the caucuses to be called.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Well, uh, also, um, if we, if we decide instead of waiting till September 15th to do it, August 15th, say.
Yeah.
Um, people that are away can do absentee ballots.
That is true.
So, you know, if they know they're gonna be away on the 15th, they can, uh, they can apply for an absentee ballot, have it mailed to them at whatever address they want, and mail it back.
That's, that's a good point.
So if, if you're worried about.
Disagreement.
Yeah, that's, that's, that can help. And that can get it done sooner than later.
That is a good point.
It's hard, it's hard to get a absentee ballot to a vacation place that you're at for a couple of days already.
For, yeah, for a couple of days.
Which I think is, is my concern with August. Not to say we couldn't hold one in August if we didn't determine it. But, you know, another thing is that the summer, to my understanding, is pretty light in terms of, I mean, it's not light, nothing's light at the moment because we have a lot of problems that we need to address. But we're not in the middle of budget season or something like that. Which would be another really good reason to have a third person because I will refuse myself on library wages, community center admin wages, uh, fire department wages, and so it'd be good to have a third person.
Well, that's another reason to have, have it ASAP.
Right, that, that's what he was saying.
Yeah.
God forbid that situation occurs before there's a third.
Yeah.
But in that case, what would happen in a situation where you essentially have a select board of one? I think that this, do, do I remember correctly that the state allows for that exigency and somebody else? Like, the things that would have to be done involve mostly warrants. Um, and I think that there, I, I will have to find the chapter and verse for you, but I do believe the state allows for a contingency, uh, under which that individual can in fact sign.
The, uh, there was a town last year that, uh, not, not very close to us, but not too far away in western Massachusetts, ugly, that had one select board member. And it, it, they made it happen. But they, I think the person kinda said.
Productivity would probably go up. Or maybe down.
Do you have to?
Approve, approve.
I guess you're a form of public body, so you can't think to yourself, um, deliberate with yourself.
Auditory conversation.
There's two seats.
All right, so for.
You're wrong, you're right.
For moving forward on calling a special election, would we like to put it on next week's agenda? Research things like caucuses, clerk election, all these items that we brought up?
Yep.
And then come back to it? And then I think it would be prudent when we do come up with an idea of August, September, October, don't call one, whatever idea we come up with, to, um, make sure we give extra advance notice. But why don't we come back to this next week? Does that make sense?
That it does. Would you be willing to consult with the clerk to make sure, um, we have a clear idea of what, um, she needs to make it happen and what blackout dates she thinks in?
Okay, and I can also talk to the caucus chairs.
Okay.
Um, and consult. What's the deal there?
Just because we know what dates we can't do it, that may inform what dates we can. Yeah.
All right, so we'll come back to this next week. We'll, we'll, we'll. If anyone has any thoughts on that, please don't hesitate to reach out. Okay. Correspondence minutes, public comments, section of the meeting, review mail and correspondence to be sent. We have none. Approve minutes of 5:9 and 5:11.
5:9 was before me, so that's on you.
So, it's my understanding from the open meeting law, which Melissa looked up, or Melissa asked the open meeting division. I can't remember. Uh, more or less, the board can decide how minutes are approved. It doesn't need to be, minutes don't need to be approved by a majority vote of the board. The board can agree that the chair or some other designated can approve minutes. So, uh, do we have the 5:9? Uh, probably.
I put him in your pile. I put him off to the side.
Yeah. Which, which item number is it?
I actually didn't put him on there because I, I was.
Oh, no, I guess I, I definitely have. I just like shuffling my.
Because it used to be when they sit in that chair.
He was sitting with the seat. I shouldn't put him in that chair.
It's the chair.
Who's gonna use that?
He was dying when he was over that chair.
The table's folded up.
She had that damn leg go. I had to put her on that side.
I know, I'm sorry. Hopefully, you know, it's possible, but let me get it off next month. It could happen.
I need my five piles of papers.
Oh, yeah?
And I only have four. Okay, so this meeting was pretty simple. There was two people present, Steve and myself. John was absent. We did agree to sign and accept the master plan agreement with BRPC with the payment stipulation addendum. And then we just approved a bunch of minutes, four sets of minutes, to give a nice clean slate for this board. I would motion that the board allows Justin Maycock to approve this set of minutes on a basis that Justin is the only remaining member present for when the minutes were due.
I, I second.
And I will vote yes.
Vote yes.
And I will by myself approve the minutes of 5:9, 22. And just because I was given the authority to do that, as, as I edited them. Okay, 5:11?
I'm just checking your.
I'm 5:00.
Sorry, I didn't give you the colored one this time.
It's, that, it's okay. It would've been great, but I totally understand.
I just was having some printer difficulties.
I don't know anything about that problem.
So, let me see. I mentioned that I had COVID. Yeah, let me know if you have any.
I'm on page 2 now. So Justin, the 5:4 ones, you can do by yourself too, right?
Exactly, second. And since there's gonna be no deliberation if I approve them by myself, we should probably just have.
Make a motion to have it.
Yeah. What we learned was pretty interesting.
Yeah.
Actually, you know what? I might as well re, are you guys interested in hearing about how to approve minutes from open meeting law? No. Okay, well, well, Melissa, Melissa will get your email. But more or less, there doesn't need to be a majority vote of the board. The board has to agree, decide which happens by majority vote, but how the minutes are approved. So that could be one member just approves them.
Oh, just one person goes over them and says they have.
It could be whatever the board decides.
Yeah.
Uh, which, uh, the initial decision is by majority, of course, but after that, it doesn't need to.
You can also do the same for mail and correspondence, that they could designate the chair to be able to come in and deal with anything.
Yeah, and I, the way that I like to do mail, and we could have this discussion with Susan, but is, we all receive it. And then if anyone feels that it's necessary to bring up a meeting, then we can put on the agenda. But if everyone sees it and doesn't feel that it's necessary, because otherwise you basically platform anybody and everybody who writes to the select board with any idea. Not to say that I don't appreciate public input, but, uh, it gives us the discretion to say, okay, that's an interesting point. Let's take that up as a board. But there might be something, okay, uh, and this is, the selectman's handbook says as much.
This is specific to correspondent?
Yes, and the select board's handbook says as much. I don't know exactly where. But it basically says, we're not required to take up every correspondence at a public meeting.
And I.
But if we're gonna act on it, of course, we need to.
I, I would totally agree that that is probably a wise approach. I mean, I think we should be informed of all the correspondence, but we should reserve the right to either put it on the agenda or not.
Yeah.
Where did we end up with, with, uh, Green and Haffer's bill that were, you had, you're still waiting to finish the conversation with KP about their bill before you ask about.
Yeah. Yeah, more or less.
Okay.
I just.
Do we have a clock ticking on that or they got?
On Green and Haffer?
Yeah.
I think probably one month, but the bills were not monthly. There were only two bills for the whole project.
You could instruct me to pay what we.
I know, and I'm thinking about it, but I don't know if that kind of hurts our. I'm inclined, based on the letter of engagement and our commu- our further communications with them, my gut instinct is that we are obligated to pay.
I suspect.
But I do want to ask counsel. But I don't want to say, okay, we have problems with your bill and this other bill. We don't pay anybody. Which I will give them the list that we agreed upon for their bill.
All right, so I'm okay with a 5:11 minutes as they stand?
Okay, do you wanna make a motion?
I am motion to approve the 5:11 minutes as amended appearing before me in this moment.
Second.
I move to approve it.
And we're voting. So I, yes or no?
Ah, uh, yes, Susan.
And I will vote yes as well, so the 5:11 minutes are approved as amended. And so what Steve and I have been doing, just initialing the top corner. And if we make changes at the meeting, we also initial, we make those changes in an initial address correction letter.
Yes.
Okay, and we have reached, uh, public comments and questions, of course, for the meeting.
Yeah, I wanna ask a question.
You don't have to clarify yourself because I might just.
Jerry, Jerry Quarron.
Hi.
With the, the last time it was discussed about the investigation, it was said that John Weingold made a lot of calls to the investigator, and that raised the price. Uh, is the select board obligated to pay for what he did without the permission? Uh, is the select board obligated to pay for what he did without the permission of the whole select board?
Probably, and, uh, as far as I can see, um, he could, if he wished to, claim that he was doing it as, um, one of the people. He claimed, at the last, I recall listening to him in an open meeting, that he had interacted with them because they had reached out to him, um, and that it was a recurring situation at their behest. I don't see any way forward to, um, pen testing, not successful.
What can we do in the future to prevent this?
So, I think, well, a couple of things to answer your question, so, one is, we had some discussion about this, and then I think John Levin had a pretty enlightening comment at the last meeting, which was that more or less, our obligation to pay Green and Hayford as a service provider is based mostly on what our agreement was with them and any communications that we had with them, not so much, um. I mean, I guess we could dispute what they were charging us for, and that could be part of, part of the question, um. I got lost.
I, I think basically what Mr. Levin was, um, indicating was that it's unlikely if we challenge it, we'll be successful.
I'm just saying, in the future.
So. Right.
We should have some measures to prevent.
We should make a better contract, it's more, has more clear lines of delineation, and I think we need to start with the next council.
Yeah. I guess so, yeah. Right.
I actually, I put, I was pretty pleased with what I put in the engagement letter, which was that, other than during interviews or providing contact information, board members and the investigator should not contact without the whole board being included, and also, if the board decision to contact the investigator. There was a gray area where after one's interview, you were usually asked, or at least I was asked for any follow-up document, or, actually, I wrote on a list, cause they said, please give us this, please give us that, please give us that. And then they also left it open-ended, send us anything that you think would help, uh, so, if, there is this weird uh, gray area there, but it was very clear that members of the board, and in general, members of the board shouldn't go and negotiate with a service provider by themselves unless designated to, um, because the board can only act by majority vote, um.
Okay.
So, and, and also, the other thing that I think was, as we're going through like this KP law bill, I think the vast majority of the hours seemed to be the initial interviews and the drafting of the report, cause that would be like four-hour chunks. And follow-up correspondence was generally like point-two, point-four, something like that, but. Well, I, I will get some advice on counsel hopefully this week, I'm waiting to hear, I shouldn't wait too long, but I'm waiting to hear uh, if they're willing to continue services tomorrow. And, and I'm sending then this probably today, tonight, or tomorrow.
I have to say, I'm pleased that we at least do have three other candidates as well.
Oh, yeah, and four, because it's my understanding, Jared, Mike, and Paul are, so we have like five options, we're not, uh.
Oh, right. This is a good situation, it may be a hard decision, but it's a good situation.
Yeah.
Um, and I, by the way, I, I just wanna reiterate that I, I have started researching, um, mediation options.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I really am in, not enthusiastic, I'm pleased to see that there are more resources than I expected, um, and that some of them seem like they're pretty high quality. Um, and that, that's a, that's good. I also, um, when I finish that job, then I think we need to start looking for the leadership training portion.
Yeah, uh, so, and, so I am going a few different directions, and what I've generally found is businesses tend to go, tend to send their people to these wildly expensive
Yeah.
trainings. And maybe they're good, and maybe that's what we need, and I'm not gonna rule that out, um, but yeah, but, yeah, no, I think that's a good thing to look into, I was kind of like, thousands and thousands of dollars for kind of like a business-y type thing.
They might not even be appropriate.
Is my understanding the state, if people have thrown around that the state does this program, I don't know if that's true, cause sometimes people say things that aren't true. Um, but.
That never happens, why?
But, uh, that would be one avenue to look into, I guess, at, at the very least, look into, maybe, maybe it doesn't make sense.
I also wanted to throw out that, um, I think that if we're going for leadership training, it shouldn't necessarily just be the select board. I think that it might be move us to have both the T A and the chief of police and the, basically all people who have significant supervisory responsibilities, so, chief of police, director of operations, T A, and the select board all participate, whether it's in one thing or in two separate things, because I think it's.
Good idea.
Um, I, I never had to be in that position, um, and, you know, Derek probably has had a ridiculous amount of training in that, like, and it's, I know Sean told me that is, um, head of the fire department, he's participated in a number of things, and he says like, some have been good and some have been kinda useless, which is about what you'd expect, but I, I still think that, um, offering that as a professional development piece, um, even if it's a periodic thing, wouldn't be a terrible thing.
So there are a few, our employee assistance program does offer some free trainings, and, um, Bay State Roads program may actually offer as well, and it really sounds like it's for roads, but they do occasionally do some administrative ones as well. One I know that is geared toward the director of ops and leadership training, um, and Garrett may also have the same kind of resources with, um, police, police training.
Speaking of, oh, sorry.
But I will. No, I'll, I'll send you the lists, uh.
That would be great.
Speaking of A P, will they come in and do that workshop that got postponed?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you if it was okay to reschedule that now that.
What workshop?
There was conflict resolution, I think.
Oh, remember the one you were excited about?
Yeah, it was so long ago that, I just get my mind.
Um, and, oh, another thing, are we planning on doing, so we have a Monday morning meeting uh, to interview M L T.
Right, right, and then presumably have a conversation about.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I'd like to, once we have that interview done, probably Wednesday, come up with a plan.
Okay.
I think, um, which might involve asking someone if they can, actually, you know what, this time, the people who didn't, who offered only hourly, seemed pretty, were offering only hourly.
I didn't think there was wiggle room there.
Yeah, because I, if I'm not mistaken, I think KP offered hourly initially, and then we went to a. But, we'll do that Wednesday.
I'm pretty sure my sense of cost is they're also gonna be hourly.
Yeah, so, we'll have that discussion and maybe consider making an appointment on Wednesday. And then, do we wanna also do the employee handbook proposal interviews next week? Is that doable during the Wednesday meeting? Do we wanna schedule another meeting? Should we put that off a week?
I'm gonna say that I would anticipate, if we wanna have a sensible discussion about counsel, I think we should come to completion with that before we start piling on more interviews.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not trying to put it off, I just feel like, I wanna make sure I have the time to, yeah.
No, yeah.
It's like, be clean, and say, that, oh, that's a set that's.
Exactly, I, I wanna have the time and to really give that due consideration, and then we have to deal with trying to craft a a contract that we're comfortable with, um, I mean, maybe they craft the contract and we make commentary on it, and make sure that we're comfortable with it in the end, but
Yeah.
let's get that done, um, and then, and then I, I, I'd like to hear what these guys have to offer, and we're gonna have a lot of interviews, cause then we gotta interview people to do mediation, and we're gonna, like, whatever, but that's okay, we're gonna get, we're gonna be pros at this interview process. Oh, my gosh.
So, maybe June first of the following, Wednesday?
I guess let's play it by ear and see how things are going, right, and.
I mean, we don't know what their turnaround time is, but let's give it a shot.
I also.
And by then, I will have an update on whether we found a candidate or not.
That will be helpful.
That would be helpful.
That would be helpful. And I also, maybe I'm different, but I, I have liked when we did a separate night or day or whatever for interviews. I know, I thought tonight's interviews went fairly well, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to be like, okay, we're just interviewing, and then you could just prepare for that, and.
I'm good with that.
Um, but we can discuss that, let's do one then.
All right, sounds like a plan.
Um, and we're at that part of the agenda.
Thank you, agenda.
We're motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn, and Susan seconded it, and I will vote yes.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn carries.
Thank you for coming.